Public meeting to order. Ready? Yes. Roll call. Councilmember report?
Here.
Councilmember Stafford?
Here.
Mayor Portman, the order?
Here.
And Nurse Siskel?
Here.
Approval of the agenda to just admitting how the judge's conditions relations? Okay, I have an addition or I have a change for the thought of the day it's going to be Brian Moore rather than myself. Okay, so now we're at public comment regarding closed session items. Oh, sorry, you're right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Public comment regarding closed session. Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject for discussion during closed session. There are any comments saying none, we will go into closed session.
We have the review of the letters for one of the vacancies in the council.
How am I missing that? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, 1A.
But we can have the...
Good, I did one. Okay. So, we're at 1A. Review letters of interest and consider appointment of applicant to fill vacancy on the city of Susanville City Council. Jessica is presenting. Are you presenting? No? Your name's up here. No?
Hello, I missed that along with you.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I did too many.
I got it right here on my phone, thank you. So, I'm Jessica Ryan King, the Susanville City Attorney. And with the resignation of Councilmember Wilson after his nomination at the March 3rd, 2020 election, the council directed staff at the March 25th meeting to proceed with solicitation to fill the vacancy by appointment pursuant to California Government Code 36512B. And direction was also given to waive the interview process and make the appointment to fill the vacancy at this meeting today. An advisement was posted and one letter was received from eligible candidate. Council will review the letter attached and consider an appointment to fill the vacancy for the term ending March of 2020. And the action requested is that the letter be reviewed and council, oh, and consider appointment of the applicant to fill the vacancy at this city council meeting.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Questions? Okay, I am looking at a motion to appoint Thomas Herrera, the Susanville City Council.
Thank you, motion to appoint Thomas Herrera, Susanville City Council. I'll second.
Call in favor?
I'd like to make a comment first.
Okay.
You know, nothing against Thomas, but this whole process is a sham. You know, one letter in the paper is all we can do. We don't follow our procedures, so we better get a procedure that we can go by because this whole thing is a sham. But go ahead and appoint Thomas and we'll go on with life.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed. Motion carries. Thomas, welcome to Susanville City Council. We can stand on this one. If you want to read, you can raise your right hand if you want to read. Aye, state your name.
Aye, how is it?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith in allegiance.
That I will bear true faith in allegiance.
For the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon, uh, upon which I am about to.
Were you seeing the crossing?
I heard the what is gonna, uh, we're gonna back you.
Yeah, we can sit over here if you want.
Thank you. Welcome, Thomas, to Susanville City Council.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now, open for public comment regarding the closed session items. Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject for discussion during closed session. Seeing none, we will go into closed session. Okay, welcome to the April 15th meeting of the Susanville City Council. Let's dance and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report any changes on the agenda.
No changes.
Report action in closed session.
Uh, direction given to staff.
Okay, and for moment of silence for thought of the day, it is Brian Moore.
Oh, behind every small business, there's a story worth knowing. All the corner shops in our towns and cities, the restaurants, the cleaners, gyms, hair salons, and hardware stores, these didn't come out of nowhere, and that was Paul Ryan.
Thank you. Okay, we have a proclamation for the Lassen County Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I'm going to read that. Whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community member of Lassen County. Whereas sexual assault affects women, men, and children of all racial, culture, and economic backgrounds. Whereas, in addition to the immediate physical and emotional cost, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. Sexual assault can be devastating for not only the survivor, but also the family, friends, and community of the survivor. Whereas, the many voices of those who have been victims of sexual violence may be supported and heard. Whereas, no one person, organization, or agency in our community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but we must work together to educate our entire community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims/ survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victims/ survivors. And whereas, the Susanville City Council strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time to start conversations, time to take appropriate action and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, be resolved that the City of Susanville City Council joins advocates and the community in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence along with the United States government and the state of California. We do hereby proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Thank you. Now we're gonna move to business from the floor. Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject on the agenda or not on the agenda. I'm sorry, yeah, or not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. However, comments on items on the agenda may be rejected until that item is discussed and any matter on that, on the agenda that requires action will be referred to to staff for a recording action at a subsequent meeting. Presentations are subject to five minutes. Anybody from the public wish to speak? No, seeing none, we're going to move on to our consistent calendar. All matters listed under the consistent calendar are considered to be routine by the city, by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any member of the public or the city council may request removal of an item from the consistent calendar to be considered separately. Counsel, I'm looking for...
Motion to receive. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to item 9A on the agenda. Warrants dated March 7th, 2020 through March 27th, 2020, and is presented by Deputy Stafford.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Call in favor? Opposed. Okay, on to 9B. 9B is Resolution Number 20-5762, avoiding impact construction and excavating the bid for sidewalk repair and replacement on Main Street, State Block 36, at various locations, authorizing mayor to execute a contract with impact construction and excavating, and that is presented by our interim Public Works Director, Daniel Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you stole my thunder. Uh, this is a fairly routine item for Public Works. We receive $16,000 a year from Caltrans to maintain sidewalk on Main Street. This year, we were fortunate enough to receive $32,000, so, every dollar that we can. We entertained bids from four contractors. As you can see, three of those gave us numbers, one was not responsive. Our local contractor, Impact Construction, came in right underneath our budget of $32,000. We are doing four locations on Main Street, and just to kind of help you with the addresses, the first one is out in front of the old St. Francis Hotel in Uptown. The second one at 1289 Main is in front of the Napa Auto Parts Store. Uh, the third one, 1430, is right adjacent to Dr. Beal's dentist office, kind of kitty corner from IGA. And then the fourth one is, actually, that's an air, so it's actually in front of State Farm Insurance, and that address is actually 2200 Main Street, 212, but... Just wanted to clarify that. So with that, we're asking that council approve Resolution 20-5762, awarding the contract impact construction in the amount of... $29,865, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Gimbeck, which is attached. Wait for questions, if any.
Questions or comments, counsel? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution 20-5762, second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will start that work as soon as weather permits.
Well, moving on to item 9C, Resolution 20-5763, authorizing the acting Public Works Director to initiate equipment purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is, indicates a need for us to replace our fleet. So we have a lot of heavy equipment within Public Works we use on a regular basis. This backhoe, as you can see from the staff report, is considerably elderly, I'll put it that way. 7,000 hours of use on a heavy piece of equipment is unusual, and what that really should say to everybody is that that usually in turn results in considerable maintenance and maintenance upkeep expense, which we don't necessarily want to do. We'd like to replace our equipment before it gets to the point where we have to replace it in kind. Further, because it's so old, the, this piece of equipment doesn't meet our air quality standards for the state, and if you're familiar with that, but there are four tiers currently, maybe even a fifth now, because that regulation moves fairly quickly. But right now, anything that is purchased and used based on its horsepower rating has to have at least a tier four rating. This piece of equipment is so old that it doesn't even rate. And so, since the city acts as the air pollution control district and provides regulation and has an officer in charge, it's very prudent that we at least get our fleet up in compliance as soon as we can. Um, we entertained many bids from vendors, the prices are very similar. The reason we picked this particular vendor, even though they weren't the lowest bid, was because they were willing to bring a piece of equipment up to Public Works, and we used it for a week without charge, and staff was very happy with its performance. Some of the other ones don't have the horsepower and the hydraulics that we need to do that kind of excavation that we typically like to perform. So we felt even though it was $3,000 more in price, that it was a better buy for us long-term. So with that, I'm asking for approval of Resolution 20-5763, which authorizes the purchase of a new Caterpillar 420 F2 backhoe and authorizing the mayor to sign a purchase agreement, which is attached, and also directing the finance manager to amend the water division budget accordingly, which would be, I believe, is of 110 capital fund. And one thing that's important about that is that does not affect the 7114, which is where the rate payers provide, you know, their funds for us, so there's no impact on the city.
Counsel, questions, comments? Nothing?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 20-5763.
Who was the second? Who's the other? Call in favor?
Aye.
Post. And then I'm pushing carries, moving on to 9D. 9D is amending section 2.04.070 of Susanville Municipal Code regarding city council meetings and agenda order business, and like Wilson, we're...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, introducing an ordinance is to amend our existing ordinance in the Municipal Code, Section 2.04.070, which provides specifics on the business for regular meetings of the Susanville City Council and the way those meetings are run. What, at the May, or, sorry, March 25th, 2020 special meeting, it was requested that the previously stated thought, word of the day, or moment of silence be changed to an invocation, and this ordinance will allow that to occur. So I'm presenting that ordinance and requesting you make a motion to waive the first reading of the introduction of the ordinance, number 20- and 25, amending section 2.04.070 of the Susanville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Questions or comments, counsel? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Call in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. We're moving on to item 12A, which is amending section 17 of the City of Susanville's Municipal Code regarding emergency housing/shelters, and that is our city planner, Paul McCallum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. If council recalls, at the April 1st special meeting, we received the first reading of proposed ordinance number 20-1022, and we did waive the first reading. We are looking for a waiving of the second reading and adoption today. I, I do, I will take time to answer questions if there's something that wasn't covered at the last meeting, but as you may recall, this is a required ordinance amendment for part of the housing element update.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading and, uh, 20-1022.
No, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item 12B, amending section 17 of the City of Susanville's Municipal Code regarding transitional and supportive housing.
Thank you. This proposed ordinance was also heard at the April 1st special meeting by the city council. We did not receive any public comment during the public hearing section for this proposed ordinance, so there are no changes. This is also the second reading, and I would entertain to waive it and recommend for adoption. Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Standing for motions.
I'd also like to make a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the amendment 20-1023. Second.
Call in favor? Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, item 12C, which is continuation of Resolution Number 20-5758, and that is our fire team, James Moore.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you. This is a housekeeping item, if you will, as we are still acting in a dog and action emergency. So on March 25th, the council approved Resolution 20-5758, declaring that local emergency regarding novel coronavirus COVID-19. Per about California GovCode, the governing body shall review and, and the need for continuing that local emergency every 60 days until that governing body terminates that local emergency. So we still have to eat, we're still using resources for the coronavirus COVID-19 preparedness and response. So I recommend that we continue, if America continues to do a whole emergency.
Questions or comments, council?
Maybe a comment, just to say, I think our team in Susanville, Lassen County, around here is really kicking butt. I think it's as simple as that, they're really, I mean, lucky on, it's pretty awesome. I think we should probably breathe, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're to confirm motion to continue.
Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 13A, an update regarding the coronavirus and the impact, and that is Chief Kevin, please, Chief Kevin.
What I'd like is I could refer to Chief Moore, he's a part of the ICS process, and he can brief on things that happened there, and then when he's done, I can give the council a briefing of some of the impacts that we're seeing around the city.
Okay, certainly, I'll give you a quick update. Uh, the team has, this is an admin team, which is staffed by city, county, and state agencies. Uh, I'd like to also commend that team, the county and the city, especially they're working well together during this process. Sub-management team has come to a point now where we feel we're, we're certainly prepared as we can be if COVID hurts our community. The plans are in place, there's multiple plans in place to mitigate beds and hospitals, you know, there's housing of the sick and ill and those sorts of things, and then investigation of those cases and such. It's, it's, as I said, it's a large team, but the team now meets twice a week just to maintain the communication, and then tactically, the operations team meets twice a week, and that is, that's the operations, is what I'm in charge of, of medical community and outreach. Um, and that's where the rubber is, the road, which is nurses and then Health and Human Services Departments. Today's numbers are zero positives, still eight pending, known tier ones, which are the highest level tier, 85 negatives, and for a total test in Lassen County of nine degrees that day that we tested. And there, there's some, we're investigating a delivery service right now that the mayor may not have read about, and you may or may not read about it, but there will be a press release. Uh, there's still deliveries occurring in the communities of certain companies, and those have now maybe become a concern, if those drivers are ill, they're, they're seeing a lot of people. Although the health officer still is fairly confident that that's in their material handling, and me handing you a box is very low risk. It's not an intimate contact, it's not a close contact. But you will probably read a press release regarding that here in the next few days. And with that, we're also working on, as responders, we, we, the firefighters filmed a video today for a press release. We're now having people approach us like they're used to calls, run up to the fire engine, run up, walk up to the responders, and we have to say, you know, stop, give me my space. But overall, I think we're, we're well prepared, we have a great team, and I appreciate your support allowing me to spend time on that team.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, for the police department, you know, as you can imagine, when the governor began this process, the governor stood at the podium, he mentioned a lot of things and some do's and don'ts yet. When he issued his executive orders, none of those do's and don'ts were in those executive orders. So we have gotten many calls regarding people congregating, and whether it's building a building or a park, or, you know, why is this business open and the other shut down? So, you know, I've, we've taken essentially just kind of a hands-off approach, because we don't want to basically, you know, tell everyone what to do. There's guidelines that state and county health officers put in place. So we are responding to those as needed. A couple of things that are on the forefront, I've been meeting with Mr. Nugent High School. They initially wanted to work on some type of special event for the seniors the day before graduation. We talked, I know Mr. Gibson bought them in some of those preliminary discussions, and I think Mr. Nugent came to the realization it would be hard for us to control them. So they are going to go forward for graduation. So what I've asked them to do is start working on a plan, a recommended plan, and then, you know, definitely have an alternative A, B, and C. There's a couple of different ideas floating, so I think it's going, you know, they're, they're set on going to graduation. You know, we will help them to what extent we can without, you know, violating those recommendations of the state. And I'm very confident the basics, meaning high school, we have some type of proposal. It will probably involve ourselves, Public Works, because they're probably going to want to shut some streets down, things like that. So again, we want to support them in whatever they do, but at the same time, staying within the recommendations of the state and the Capitol House. So other than that, again, we have our, as you can imagine, our family fights are a little bit, our domestic balances are up a little bit, people inside. And so, again, we haven't really had communication with specific businesses. We did have one business that we, we did make contact with, and that was about it. So we're trying to explain to people, you know, how, how this started as far as what the true recommendation versus the violation of law or violate, violation of anything that the governor put in his recommendation. So other than that, department, I mean, department's great, people are coming to work, and we've been very fortunate. We've had a couple of folks who have been sick, but it's turned out to be good.
I, I originally had an idea to let the senior class, and, and staff knows about this, to allow the senior class to graduate down Main Street in their cars if they wanted to, and I found abruptly, kind of, that that's not something that can be done because Caltrans runs, or not Caltrans, I apologize, Caltrans runs Main Street, and so that, that didn't work out. But I want to tell you that whatever we can do to help the class of 2020, we really need to do that. These seniors are going through a lot right now, and I, I do feel, I feel for them, and whatever we can do, I really think we should help them. And I also wanted to do a shout-out to our essential workers. The department head, or, yeah, the department head meeting, I thanked our city staff for, for being here and continuing services to our community and being so willing to do it and on it. But I wanted to thank the essential workers in Susanville, because they're working every day, and they're making sure we get our groceries and numerous things. And so I wanted to take a minute to do that. Does the council have anything?
I agree with you. Thank you.
One last thing, and I forgot. We have gotten some mini reports of some possible prize gathering. So just in a preliminary investigation, we're not seeing that. We're not seeing that. So we have a couple of, at least one anomaly, but we have seen no proof of prize gathering as far as, some things might go up or down, but all retailers are very close, apart from one item. So we're gonna look into that, but that was another concern we were kind of getting. So, I want to come to the outside, I have no idea. But as far as food, they're all pretty consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any council items?
Thank you. Thank you. This one is addressed to everybody in the room, but also, you might be watching online on both these cameras out here. I would like, I would love to encourage the community to really cheer on the city staff multiple times that's brought up how great they're doing. The city staff has so much going on, and I believe, Mike, the next regular scheduled meeting, we do get to discuss the priorities. Our team is under-focused and overworked, and all the awesome people from our finance department, planning upstairs, and Public Works, and police, and fire, are really always doing their best, and nobody can really tell they're struggling, because they're really kicking so much butt. And I would encourage people to get involved and actually say thank you. It's saddening when I do hear members of the public who think and feel otherwise. Unfortunately, there have been expectations that were set that did not set up our staff for success. But I don't think the council or anybody at this point would like to move forward in that direction. I think we would really like to work with staff to set realistic expectations so that we can really inspire and motivate our hard-working, incredibly intelligent, strong staff, dedicated staff, who are amazing. So anybody who's watching, everybody who works for the city, really is doing their best, and I think it would be an awesome opportunity for all of us to work together, work on re-prioritizing our expectations, and just cheering them on like we would a high school football team, and just like we support our own high school graduating class of twenty-twenty. I agree with Madam Mayor on that. Our people here in this town, in this county are awesome.
Anyone else?
Everyone's molten. I'd just like to address the public and thank everyone for having me, the council, and the mayor, and the council members as well. I know that there is a lot to face. I understand that. I know that there is concern about my age. But I have a lot to learn, and I have a lot to give, and I think that this community does as well. I'm especially impressed, I've never been more proud than right now, that if you're, I'm amongst all of you, while we're working through this tough time. I know that it's very hard in our community, I mean, you know, I lost my job, my business, and everything, and I understand that times right now are uncertain. What I can say is that this council has ever been more focused, while I took, been here anyways, than doing the right thing and getting us focused, and the city focused. So I would very much like to thank Chief Jones, Chief Moore for headlining this and really going above and beyond to ensure that we're safe. I would like to thank all the police officers, fire department, and all city employees for working above and beyond and going off the clock. And I just want to say thank you very much, and I am very, very honored to be sitting here and to be helping all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, welcome aboard, and we got a pair of old marks. We appreciate you. Okay, any other items from the council?
I would like to see if we can get put on the next agenda to do a closed session with Debbie on our finances, because I think we're way in the hole where nobody really realizes it. One of the CalPERS losing sixty-nine million dollars last month is gonna have a huge effect on us.
I don't know that we can bring that in closed session. And I wish we could, because it would be a great opportunity to have some very, very open discussion, but I don't believe the safe harbor provides us to bring that.
Do I know, because I don't know what it's up with your tab?
When are we done in our workshop? Debbie?
Debbie, would you like to schedule a...
We can attempt to do it, but first meeting in May, if you're, are you ready for that?
Actually, I was hoping to do it before the first meeting in May.
It would require a special meeting.
And the first meeting would be concentrated just on general fund.
If the council so desires, we can do that.
Do you want a special meeting, counsel? Go with that?
I hope, but I think we know the finances, so, what's your name, Debbie?
I can be ready whenever, counsel. Counsel, will you check in the calendar and see, like, next week? How about the last date here? April, whatever, last week of April, see if you're available.
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine. Okay, Wednesday, twenty-nine? Which is after, what time? What time? It's probably gonna take a while, some hard discussions, can it be done during the day? Mr. Moore, would you pass on to Mr. Moore? I know you work, and you're gonna be there.
Yeah, I can be here during the day. Ten AM?
Ten? Okay, so ten o'clock, April twenty-ninth. Okay, that's all, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Meeting adjourned, we will see you guys.
Good job.